The date was 2010. It seemed like an easy formula, 30 years out, I'll pay my mortgage, we'll pay it off. We're past 2010 now. Then in 89, the funding date was 2020, kicked out another 30 years. And then in 2010, it was kicked out again to 2033. This bill kicks that date out to 2047. The Commission has heard testimony about the demographics of Minnesota. In the 80s and 90s, Governor Carlson always said, "We could fund these pensions at 80% to 85%. We have a good plan." That might have worked a generation ago. It doesn't work today. The population has aged. The ratio of retirees to active has changed. We have to meet these obligations now. The state demographer came in and testified, and we're going to have a fairly stable population. The retire number will grow a little bit. The younger children will grow a bit, but it's time to fund these plans. Minnesota has really gotten by on the cheap compared to the national average. We appreciate everything that's in this bill. There are benefit reductions, but the money needs to come into these plans so that these benefits are guaranteed and they can count on them. This is a hard bargain that you, Representative O'Driscoll, and Chair Rosen have driven. It's a fair bargain. It's a right bargain. It's a bargain that's good for the state, and it's particularly good for police and fire because it's time to pay the benefits and put the money aside. We've learned a lot of lessons. Feast and famine, Joseph talking to the Pharaoh, we should have listened to him years ago. When there's a feast, you put the money aside so that when the famine comes, you can eat. And that's what this bill does, and we greatly appreciate your support.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony this evening. The next provision that we will look at is the MSRS provisions, and I'm going to break this into two different invites to the testifying table. I'm going to ask that Mr. Mark Tussow and Shayna Schmidt come forward, and then, when they're done with their testimony, we'll then move to the second group of people who have commented this evening on the MSRS proposal, or provisions, I should say. Did I do well? Is it Mr. Tussow?
Yes.
Well, good.
We're one of the few.
Okay.
Most people say "Toso," and it's like, no, it's Tussow.
Okay. Well, good evening, sir, and welcome to the Commission. If you'll state your name for the record, and again, keep your testimony in about two to three minutes. We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Chair, members of the committee, thank you for having me here to testify. My name is Mark Tussow. I am a hydrogeologist at the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, where I've been for almost 26 years. One reason why I chose my career with the state despite not being eligible for Rule of 90 is because of the MSRS. I could have made more money elsewhere, but the combination of a defined benefit plan and deferred compensation would allow me to retire earlier than I would have otherwise. I fully support measures to stabilize the MSRS, but I'm concerned about the elimination of early retirement factors and deferred augmentation. While these have minimal cost, they have a tremendous impact to long-term career employees like myself. These changes are coming at a critical time for those of us in later stages of our careers, just when we can see the finish line as if the rug is being pulled out from underneath us. I understand there are concerns over fired-for-cause employees and those others who leave for jobs that are also receiving deferred augmentation, but these bills cast a pretty wide net that captures career employees like myself, who are just making, who have been making financially responsible decisions to put us in a position to retire a few years early. I also understand there are concerns with the brain drain due to early retirement. This already is occurring at my agency, and we have no plans with how to deal with it. We've tried to discuss phased retirement with our agency, but they don't really want to implement it on any widespread scale. Early retirement isn't the issue. It's not having a plan which only postpones the inevitable. The loss of deferred augmentation could also make Minnesota a less competitive employer and damper out any employment retention rates. I'm a perfect example of someone who chose a career in Minnesota because of the MSRS. I also want to just briefly mention some of the COLA changes. One of my coworkers is two weeks younger than me, we're the same age. He gets, he started a few years early than me, so he gets Rule of 90. I don't. We both joke about retiring on the same date. I would be retiring early, he would be retiring under Rule of 90. Under the changes you have for COLA, he would get COLA adjustments every year. I'd have to wait six years to get COLA adjustments, and if we both retire at the same date. That seems to be a disproportionate impact on those of us who are already starting out at a pretty reduced benefit level in the first place. In summary, not everybody has the means to retire early, so the loss of early retirement factors and deferred augmentation might only affect a limited number of employees, but please understand, we've made financial sacrifices to get to this point. Please consider how some of these changes affect career employees who have been making wise financial decisions for decades to retire early. Even something like reducing the sudden financial impact by extending the phase-out periods further would help with retirement planning and would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Tussow, thank you very much for your testimony this evening. Ms. Schmidt?
Hello, my name is Shawna Schmidt. I work at the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as well, although I've only been there 11 years. I chose the PCA after working in private industry for a while because it had good retirement benefits. I was at a point in my career where I could choose where to work based on some long-term planning issues, and the retirement benefits are a very good incentive for employment at the state. I don't want to work until I'm 67. I would like to retire early and enjoy my time with my husband, who's older, and various other things. So, you know, the deferred augmentation does play into it, and so does the cost of living adjustment. I would just say that, you know, consider people who are not so close to retirement and still want to take advantage of some of these benefits. When I signed up for state service, the plan was in place, and having it change, you know, midway through the course is upsetting. So I'd just like you to think about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you both for being with us this evening. And if you want to submit that, you can go ahead and do that. Thank you. And our next set of testifiers will be from the University of Minnesota Hospitals and Fairview. Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could counsel, please remind me of what those phase-out periods that the first testifier, Mr. Tosco, was mentioning that he would like to phase out longer?
Certainly, Representative Murphy. Ms. Barth or Ms. Luchewski? Ms. Luchewski?
I don't know if you brought along, sorry, Representative Murphy and Representative O'Driscoll, if you brought along the summary of the bill. That explains it pretty clearly, I hope. The phase-in on the COLA deferral will, the change is on page four, and it will postpone the start of the COLA until normal retirement age, and that is effective after January 1, 2024. So there is a long phase in there where it's not effective until five years out. The other change that he mentioned having to do with early retirement, that phases in the removal of the augmentation increase over a five-year period. So that's the 2.5% or 3% that's added back into the calculation of the early retirement benefit, and that is phased, and it starts immediately, but then is phased in over a five-year period.
Representative Murphy? Very good. Sorry that I didn't see your question before, Representative Murphy. With that, we will now ask from the University of Minnesota Hospitals Fairview employees, Tammy Miller, Steve Bennett, and Chris Sen to come forward at this time. Good evening and welcome to the Commission. I just read the names off. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's the order you need to go in. Whichever order you would like to go in is certainly fine with the Commission. We'll just ask you to catch my attention. I'll call on you. You go ahead and identify yourself for the record, and we'll proceed with testimony at that point. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
If you can't, if you're not sure, I'll pick one.
I'll go.
Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Hello, my name is Tammy Miller, and I began my career at the University of Minnesota Hospital as a clinical laboratory scientist. I had worked for 10 years when we were bought by my current employer, Fairview, and if you recall, at the time, the hospital was struggling financially, and the state government encouraged the buyout and bargained for the pension enhancement as it stands today. I was a brand-new mother at the time and relieved that my only retirement savings was intact with the enhancements. And from the state perspective, they also were relieved as they were no longer responsible for a financially troubled hospital. The bargain pension agreement was a win-win for all at that time. I'm sure we wish all that story would end there, but unfortunately, that is not the case and the reason I am here today. The proposal incrementally to reduce our enhancement by 7.5% starting in January of 19 will have a significant impact in our retirement. And although I understand the need for all to make sacrifices to ensure the fund stays solvent, this proposal is simply punishing. To reduce all enhancements to zero is extreme. A 7.5 reduction is extreme, and it's extreme when in 2017, the general fund grew by 11.25%. It's extreme when total additions to the general fund in 2017 grew by 544%. And it is extreme in that I am fortunate, if I am unfortunate, to retire in 10 years, it will reduce my and several of my colleagues' retirement benefits by over 47%. These changes will be affecting a very small group of us, of approximately 1,000 U of M Hospital employees, very small beings in comparison to the 116,000 MSRS general members. The reductions will have very little impact on the MSRS fund, but a significant impact on us as individuals. The MRS Board recommended a proposal to reduce our enhancement to 4.5% starting in January of 2021. We support that proposal as it would allow time for us to adjust and negate some of the financial loss that we are experiencing. The MSRS is a fair proposal and one of which I will support and hope that you will support. I have handouts comparing the current proposal to the MSRS proposal for your review. I want to thank you for your time, and I ask for your support of the MSRS recommendations. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, thank you for your testimony. If you want to get those to, at least I shall distribute those to the members of the Commission. Thank you so much. Who would like to go next? Good evening, sir. If you'll state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Stephen Bennett. I want to echo everything that the previous testifier said, and I can tell you on a personal note that I'm 60 years old. I'm planning on retiring at 65, and this special augmentation has always been part of my plan. And, you know, I stayed in 1996, not only because of my dedication to the hospital, I've been working there for 18 years, but also with the understanding that this special augmentation had been arranged. I think that people had a choice to leave, and they stayed because of their love for the hospital and wanted to make sure that it survived as Fairview University Medical Center. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, thank you. And Ms. Sen?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Sen, and as Tammy, I'm also a clinical laboratory scientist at the University of Minnesota, both the Medical Center and the Masonic Children's Hospital. And basically echoing on, and what both of these people have said is, we understand the idea of a shared sacrifice, but we do not support the current bill as it is written. The introduction of this bill is very punitive, reducing the employee's benefits to zero over a period of six years till 2024, and have a dramatic impact on the small number of remaining employees, not even reflecting the minimum wage. You know, in 1997, there was a lack of support from the state and the university to support a medical center, so the decision was made to sell U of M C to Fairview. You know, we as employees really had no decision in that, but were given an increased MSRS augmentation in order to partially compensate for the loss of other things in healthcare and pay. At the time, two actuarial studies showed that the MSRS was fully funded by Fairview for that increased augmentation. We at N Health continue to be the primary teaching hospital and produce the majority of practicing physicians and healthcare professionals in the state. You know, everyone in the state has benefited from the care and the research that is performed there, and a lot of that reflects the dedication of which we former U of H, the employees, continue to support the state of Minnesota. Like other staff being discussed in this amendment, you know, I had worked for the hospital for 25 years at the time of the hospital's sale. My MSRS contributions are critical to my future retirement because, you know, obviously when you collect, when you save your retirement for the first 25 years of retirement, that is going to grow more than the retirement that you save after that point. So if I'm comparing the 21 years since I have worked for Fairview with those 25 years, my MSRS savings actually constitute close to 75% of my retirement and are not earnings that I can easily make up 20 years later. So we request that you amend the bill to support a reduction in the augmentation to 4.5%, continuing nearly as recommended by the MSRS Board last year. We serve our patients with integrity and respect, and our request is just to receive the same from you as our elected leaders.
Thank you all three for being with us this evening and sharing your testimony. And members for the record and the members for the general public, there was a fourth submission from a former employee of the University of Minnesota Hospitals and Fairview employee by the name of Karen Elrich, and the members have received that written document this evening because she was unable to be here with us this evening as well. So with that, thank you so much for being with us. And the next provision that we're going to look at is going to be that of the PERA provisions that are in the bill this evening. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Sir Lorenz to come forward, and I'll ask Ms. Julie Blile to come forward, Leonard Crum, and Keith Carlson, excuse me, to come forward at this time, and we will hear from them on their respective PERA provisions this evening.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Leverens. I'm testifying on behalf of AFSMI Council 65. AFSMI Council 65 represents approximately 14,000 state and local government employees in greater Minnesota, from International Falls to Austin, from Duluth to Moorhead, and everywhere in between. First, I would like to thank Senator Rosen, Representative O'Driscoll, all the members and staff of the Pension Commission and the Legislature, the Pension Fund staff, and the governor and his representatives who worked so hard on this bill. My members truly appreciate your work. AFSMI Council 65's number-one concern regarding Minnesota's public employment pension funds has always been that they be capable of paying our members' pensions. Our members have consistently been willing to pay more and take cuts in their benefits to ensure the plans were fiscally sound. Our members have always understood and supported the shared sacrifice, and they support the shared sacrifice, the increased contributions, and the cuts to benefits in the 2018 Omnibus Pension Bill. This bill also affects me personally. My husband is a retired disabled firefighter. He went into burning buildings for 30 years to earn his parapoliceman fire pension. Under current law, which this bill does not change, his COLA on his pension is going to be the lowest of all the funds, 1% likely for the rest of our lives. But we support that because it is so important that the pension funds be secure. My husband is not unique in the difficulty of his work. The people I represent do what is often very, very difficult work. There are snowplow operators who get up at 2:00 a.m. and work a 20-hour day plowing snow in a blizzard. There are social workers who see horrific child abuse. There are paraprofessionals who get hit and kicked by students daily. There are police officers who, every shift, wonder whether they will encounter a person with a gun. All of these employees and all of Minnesota's public employees work hard at jobs that we need them to do. They do this because they are committed to the work they do and because they need a decent wage, health insurance for themselves and their families, and because they need a pension to retire on. The bill in front of you ensures that these hard-working Minnesotans, who live in most of your districts, will get the pensions they have been promised. On behalf of AFSMI Council 65's 14,000 greater Minnesota members, I ask that you support the Omnibus Pension Bill.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Ms. Blile, we'll go to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julie Blile, Legislative Director for AFSMI Council 5. I'm here tonight also representing the Public Employees Pension Coalition, and I believe the Pension Staff has handed out a letter to all of you. I'm going to hit a few highlights in my testimony that the Coalition members have agreed upon. First of all, we are a coalition, the Public Employees Pension Coalition is a coalition of over 20 public sector unions, retiree groups, and affiliated organizations representing nearly all of the 340,000 active public employees in Minnesota and most of over 175,000 retired public employees who receive public pensions. Pepsi, as the acronym, and our organization are in full support of Senate File 2620 and House File 3053 as it has been introduced. We want to extend our personal thanks to all of you, the Legislative Commission staff, the members and the staff, and all of you who have worked so long and hard on this legislation. It is a product of over three years of work by many of the constituencies and represents a comprehensive solution to the funding challenges facing Minnesota's public pension plans. There is shared responsibility and sacrifice in this legislation. Senate File 2620 and House File 3053 incorporates many of the principles and recommendations of Governor Mark Dayton's December 2016 Blue Ribbon Panel, as well as very significant efforts and contributions from each of you as members of the Commission. The reform package has important and fiscally conservative measures, which include the reduction of investment return assumption to 7.5% for all pension plans, benefit reductions, increases in contributions by employees and employers, reductions in COLAs, elimination of COLA triggers, and significant changes in augmentation rates. The balance of reforms, along with funding, is a keystone to our path forward. Minnesota's unfunded accrued pension liability would be immediately reduced by over $3.3 billion and reflected in the Pension Fund's financial statements this year and, as previously, all the Pension Fund Directors testified earlier this evening before you. The benefit reductions in this legislation alone will not be adequate, however. The additional state funding for pensions is an equally essential component of the legislation. It is essential that the state contributions necessary to ensure that these plans are on target to be fully funded remain in the legislation and the bill remain a standalone We request the Pension Commission pass the Senate File 2620 before you, House File 3053 is introduced, and make the funding of the commitments in this legislation a reality this legislative session. We understand the budget forecast for the state is modestly positive for this biennium and the next. We believe that pensions should be a top priority of the Legislature on a bipartisan basis. Please understand that our members support this legislation because of the promised funding. Without those funds, there is no agreement to support this legislation. More importantly, to the over 500,000 Minnesotans covered by public employee pensions, this legislation will clearly demonstrate that the state will honor the pension promises that have been made to teachers, police officers, correctional officers, firefighters, professionals, skilled workers, and other employees who devote their lives to serving the public. In addition, you will see at the bottom of the page the listing of organizations, which includes AFSMI Council 65, AFSMI Council 5, Education Minnesota, Minneapolis Federation of Teachers, Minneapolis Committee of 13 Pension PAC, Inter Faculty Organization, Police Officers Federation of Minneapolis, Minneapolis Firefighters Local 82, Minnesota Professional Firefighters Association, Middle Management Association, Minnesota AFL-CIO, Minnesota Government Engineers Council, Education Minnesota Retired, AFSMI Council 5 Retirees, Minnesota Nurses Association, Minnesota State Troopers Association, Teamsters Local 320, Minnesota Police Fraternal Association, St. Paul Teachers Pension PAC, MMRA, Public Employees Pension Service Association, Retired Educators Association of Minnesota, Minnesota Association of Professional Employees, MAP, and the Minnesota Conservation Officers Association. And I thank you for your indulgence to be able to read those all into the record. Thank you, members.
Well, Ms. Blile, I can tell you that's not the first time you've read that. That's for sure. Thank you for your testimony this evening. Is it Mr. Crum or Mr. Crum?
Crum.
Sir, welcome. If you'll state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Leonard Crum, President of MMRA and part of the coalition here. I do have a handout for the members. We are here to fully support Senate File 2620 and House File 3053. MMRA is a retiree organization representing roughly 4,000 basic and coordinated para-general retirees. Most of our members are basic plan members. They do not receive Social Security. Their pension, their para-general pension is their sole pension benefit. The only mechanism preventing their pension from significantly eroding over time is the para-general COLA. Prior to the 2010 sustainability legislation, all three public pension plans had the same 2.5% COLA. MSRS and TRA were reduced to 2%, while para was reduced to 1% of the, part of that legislation. Our actuaries have found that the cost of sustaining the fund has been borne by the retirees in the form of COLA reductions, deferred interest rate, and refund rate, while 9% has been borne by the employers. What this means for retirees is that the value of our pension has eroded and will continue to erode significantly without an adjustment of the current COLA. Without change, the para-general COLA structure will result in a 38% reduction of a person's pension relative to the CPIW, which is the measure used by Social Security Administration to determine annual COLAs. According to estimates prepared by our actuaries, basic plan members already have contributed over $15,000 apiece in lost benefits since 2010. We can anticipate losing $248,000, or a quarter of a million dollars individually in benefits through 2036 if a 1% COLA continues indefinitely. For coordinated plan members who have already contributed over $6,000 in lost benefits since 2010, they can anticipate losing $106,000 in lost benefits. The para-general proposal approved by the PERA Board and before you is a result of an inclusive process where PERA engaged all stakeholders, including retirees. It replaces the current COLA trigger structure with a plan tied more closely to inflation and the CPI. It also includes a number of other reforms which will improve the plan's funding status more rapidly, increasing the likelihood of a long-term plan's sustainability. The proposal does not require an increase in employee or employer contributions and will mean a more equitable post-retirement increase structure that is tied to the actual inflation, and it does not require any state participation. While not solving the problem, this proposal addresses the issue of pension erosion relative to inflation in a meaningful way. The trigger structure was not workable. The proposed COLA provides a fairer COLA The proposed COLA provides a fairer COLA without adding actuarial cost to the plan. I thank you.
And, and this is a, a reminder, one of the things I'd ask for the, the setup was, if you have written comments, I'm grateful. What ends up happening is your, your time starts getting away from you on that, and we'd like to actually hear from the heart of you on the title of the proposal. If you can do that, that means the most to us to hear from you. We'd be happy to take your written comments and give it all to the members as well. We'd want to hear from you on a conversational standpoint, the things that you are in favor of or have opposition to. If you could do that for the Commission. And again, we'd be happy to take your written comments and give it all to the members as well. But that's what I, what I was hoping for this evening, I said, we'll, we might have a moment in particular up front. We've had to have a, a presentation, and that's a, a, advice to vote, so we have to speak this evening so that we can stay on time and hear from those who maybe have had a chance to sign out of the panel. Mr. Carlson, the one who, 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 go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. I'm Keith Carlson. I'm Executive Director of the Minnesota Inter County Association, and I'm pleased to say that the PERA employers agree with the employee representatives. We support Senate File 2620, House File 3053. We believe the recommendations captured in the bill represent the combined efforts of the PERA staff, the PERA Board, and both employer and employee representatives to come up with an agreed-upon solution to the funding challenges for the three plans. We believe the proposal that was come up with is equitable to employees, employers, retirees, and to our taxpayers. It preserves basic benefits. It retains an affordable cost-of-living adjustment that will increase from that available under current law for the general plan in higher-inflation environments. It phases out the cross-generational augmentation subsidy from employers and employees to early retirees for their pensions that are not currently what is their actuarial equivalent and from those who have already been terminated. The cost of the augmentation that is provided under current law is 0.4% of payroll, nearly two-thirds of the cost to increase the two, the current law's 2.5% COLA in 2046. So it is a substantial cost that you have, should be taken into consideration as we make your deliberations. I do particularly want to emphasize the need to enact the police and fire changes that were carried over from last year. The funding situation of that plan is deteriorating, and so it is particularly important that you make timely enactment of the changes that are included in that bill. With that, I'll conclude. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. And, 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 thank all of you for the, 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 the,[976.12]
Thank you, Chair O'Driscoll, Commission members. I'm Louise Sundin. I'm here representing the 8,000 educators, retired, active administrators, and teachers in Minneapolis Public Schools. And we're here to add our support, strong support, for 2620 and 3053 as submitted. Thank you for your work, your continued work over the last three years on this legislation. Educators always appreciate perseverance, and we have been persevera-- not perseverating, but persevering. We pledge to communicate our strong support to our retirees who live in almost every legislative district in the state, as well as those actively teaching. And you see that that we-- our folks live all over the state by the handouts you got. Remember, our retirees don't leave Minnesota. They stay here in Minnesota communities, continuing to contribute to the vitality of every community across our state. But we have to point out, as retirees, who will account for the majority of the savings with COLA reductions that will-- we will never get back, but nevertheless, a sacrifice that we, as retirees, accept. I'd like to remind you of who we represent and whose futures you will affect. Minnesota educators are still 75% women, and a high number are single women, heads of household. We have no help other than you, ourselves, and Medicare to keep strong. Yes, the actuaries told us that little old lady schoolteachers live forever, and that most Minnesotans-- or more Minnesotans will live to be over 100 than all but two states in this country. I'm praying for both of those. That requires an even higher commitment on your part to live up to the contract that our educators signed in order to earn the pensions that they helped pay for throughout their careers. Those careers have been dedicated to educating the state's children from birth through higher education in our public institutions. We made a commitment to teach Minnesota's students and workers, and we have, through our work, contributed to the success of Minnesota's economy, and it's the reason our Fortune 100 and 500 companies come year and stay year. Our manufacturing is strong. We have huge healthcare systems, and more come here and stay. In return, teachers expect compensation that includes salary and benefits that include a good pension. The difference, however, between last year and this is that 2018 is a time when educators are fearful. There's a real fear factor that government will not live up to its commitments. We hear their angst at meetings. As with everyone else, the active teachers are worried too about their personal safety, as well as their financial security. Some of that worry is based on their responsibility as analocal parentis to keep students safe in their classrooms. That fear only grows when we receive dozens of emails every day warning us of stolen personal data being used to file fraudulent claims for pension benefits, and constant warnings of IRS scams. And every day, we get emails about the threats to the secure funding of Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security. But the Minnesota Legislature can calm those fears, restore faith by passing 2620 and 3053. Finally, I want to thank you again for your work on this legislation that'll keep our educators receiving the pensions they earned, the ones they paid into. Like you, we want to be able to afford good healthcare, to stay in our homes, to stay mentally strong, please God, and use the secure retirement benefits that we have earned to do all that, long after we hang up our sturdy teaching shoes and our chalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Good evening, Chair O'Driscoll and members of the Pension Commission. My name is Rodney Rowe. I'm a teacher on leave from the Worthington Public Schools, and I currently serve as the Secretary of Treasury to Education Minnesota, which represents more than 86,000 educators across the state. We are all well aware of the current teacher shortage in Minnesota, particularly in greater Minnesota, along with the lack of the teachers of color. And in a time when we need to recruit and retain teachers in our profession, we also need to ensure that we continue to offer teacher compensation packages, which recognize and reward the teachers for their hard work on behalf of all of our Minnesota students. This includes a reliable pension. The benefit of a reliable pension provides the support in our ability to retain teachers well into the future. Public employee unions, legislators, and policymakers have worked tirelessly to get to the place that we are at tonight. And while there are certainly some tough sacrifices included in this proposal, and that we may not love them all, Senate File 2620 is a good compromise that ensures a stable pension fund for the current and future generations to come. Education Minnesota supports Senate File 2620 as introduced, along with the necessary funding from the state to offset any increases in contribution rates. On behalf of the 86,000 educators, we would like to thank the chair, the committee members, the committee staff, and the governor for your work up to this point. We remain committed to work with you, and we ask that you remain committed to the work that still lies ahead in the upcoming days, so that we can get this across the finish line this session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, and all of the other testifiers. Appreciate you being here with us this evening. And--
Mr. O'Driscoll, if I may? With a strong public pension, we can all live long and prosper.
Oh, there you go. See? See there? We keep going with the references.
I was actually going to save that for the next time I'm up here, but--
Very good.
I won't need to.
Representative Murphy.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Mr. Chair, Ms. Sundin, Ms. Beaver, just--
Representative Murphy, did you want them to return to the testifying table for a question?
I guess they could--
Ms. Beaver and Ms. Sundin.
They can give the answer from where they are.
For the record, I'd like to have them at the microphone.
For the record, yes.
So if you'll just put the next crew on pause for a moment here, and Ms. Sundin and Ms. Beaver, if you would please return to the testifying table.
I listened carefully to the testifier of the previous panel, and I happened to think about the spirit that Mr. Duberstein was talking about, and how proud he was that we had this bill in the shape that it is. But I was thinking about the spirit and our friend, former Representative Sandy Peterson, and who was a leader of Education Minnesota and the Federation, and we spent many years with. And I was just thinking about, if her spirit is with us on this bill, do you think she would advise a yes vote?
Ms. Sundin, we'll start with you. Ms. Beaver, we'll go to you.
Thank you. I appreciate the question, Representative Murphy. I'm convinced of it because I actually got an email from her last week. Now, I figure there had to be a reason that the computer-- the great computer system in the sky obviously sent it for some reason. But I consider it directly from her. And I'm convinced that in her career in representing teachers in this state, that she would see that this compromise, though not what you have heard, though not partial for every part of the profession, we do need to continue it to be strong, continue to have the teachers in the state supported, and we can-- this won't be the end. We'll go back, and we'll do more work on it, but I'm convinced she'd be sitting here.
Ms. Beaver.
Yes, I would agree with Ms. Sundin's comments just now. I think the retired teachers are looking at this as-- exactly as what Mr. Duberstein quoted, was that doing what's good for the most people. As I said in my statement, it is a sacrifice. I mean, it's 1% this year, and then next year, it's 1%, and it's-- you know, that's compounded. And it is a sacrifice. Will inflation stay where it's at? Will inflation ramp up? That might become a greater sacrifice if inflation does ramp up. But we also know that it's absolutely necessary for these changes to be made if this system is going to remain viable, not only for us who are already retired, but for future active teachers who are going to retire in the future. And I think that the defined benefit kind of a system is just a fantastic thing for the state of Minnesota, because it means that you have all these educators, and in some of the other funds as well, who are retiring, and they're not going to run out of money. They are not going to become a burden on the state. They are not going to live a lavish life. But it is going to be a financially stable life, which means it will be financially stable for the state as well. And I really think about a lot of these smaller rural areas where their demographics are changing very much to become older and older, and that the pension beneficiaries who live in those communities will be very important to keeping those communities stable financially. So I think that Ms. Peterson would have thought this was a good thing to do.
And Mr. Chair, Representative Murphy, including Benson, Minnesota, where Sandy was from.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good, Representative Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And with that, thank you for being available for follow-up. Now, we will ask Fred Nolan and Scott Kruenquist, Valerie Dozlin, and Grace Kelleher to please come forward. And did you want to start in the order that I had introduced, or? Okay. We will go ahead and begin with that.
I'm Fred Nolan, the Executive Director of the Minnesota Rural Education Association, representing 224 member school districts across greater Minnesota. Our member school districts are very concerned about teacher shortages. A stable, defined-benefit T.R.A. plan is a critical factor in retaining and recruiting teachers. Our platform calls for the maintenance of a stable, defined-benefit plan through shared responsibility. This bill does that. And we want to thank the retirees for what you just heard, and their willingness and understanding of this. For these reasons, MRA fully supports Senate File 2620 and House File 3053 as presented tonight, and the use of the pension adjustment to distribute to districts their increased T.R.A. employer contributions. We thank the co-chairs and all of us for the hard work on this bill, and urge its passage into law.
Mr. Nolan, thank you. Mr. Kruenquist, if you'll identify yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Scott Kruenquist with the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. And you're going to hear a similar theme. I would like to add AMSD's voice of support to Senate File 2620, House File 3035, and want to thank all of the Commission members and staff for your tireless work putting together an excellent bill that will greatly improve the funded ratio of T.R.A. and the other pension plans. We think it's vitally important that the Legislature do move forward this year and adopt this important legislation. I also want to especially thank you for including the pension adjustment mechanism to pay for the employer contribution in the bill. As you all know, your local school boards do not have general levy authority, so absent that language, they would need to find the funding within their general fund budget. And so this important language will protect programs for students and staffing and other important issues in your local schools. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members.
Thank you, Mr. Kruenquist. Ms. Dozlin, if you'll go ahead and identify yourself and proceed with your testimony this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Valerie Dozlin. I represent the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. We are school superintendents and other administrators around the state. The funding, the T.R.A. bill-- excuse me, the pension bill is a priority of MASA, and we strongly support the bill before you today. We appreciate the work that the Pension Commission members have done over the course of the interim, as well as the retirees and the teachers in working together to craft a package for you. We also want to thank the Commission for the pension adjustment mechanism and funding the employer contribution portion. We know that there's a lot of work ahead, and we will stand by you to support this bill. Thank you. And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I could just add, Roger Aronson, who represents the principal associations, the elementary and secondary principal associations, ask that I forward their support as well.
Thank you. Duly noted. Ms. Kelleher.
Good evening, members. My name is Grace Kelleher, and I represent the Minnesota School Boards Association. We represent over 2,000 locally elected school board members from every school district in the state. I want to start by saying I appreciate your energy, the staff's energy, and T.R.A.'s energy in finding this solution going forward. MSBA does support this bill, and we urge the Pension Commission to continue to strongly advocate for a state allocation for-- to cover the necessary costs included in the employer's contribution through the pension offset provision. This offset, we feel, more fairly and truly reflects the pension costs borne by our school districts from around the state. We also feel that separate state aid that is dedicated to pensions is important for school districts, because it allows school districts' funding to be used for other critical E-12 programs that focus on stool and student achievement goals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And our final testifier on the T.R.A. provisions this evening.
Mr. Chair and Commission members, my name is Joel Albright, and I am on the school board of Rosemont Apple Valley Eagan, Minnesota's fourth-largest school district. And to answer everybody's first question, no, I'm not related to Representative Albright, although we have worked together on mutual clients in the past. In addition to being on the school board, I am on the Executive Board of Schools for Equity and Education. I'm our school board's designee to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and I'm a member of the Minnesota School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. And in addition to all of that, I'm a pension actuary. I've worked as a consultant to retirement plans for over almost 30 years. I'm here this evening on behalf of District 196 and Schools for Equity and Education in conjunction with AMSD and MSBA to testify in favor of Senate File 2620 and House File 3053. District 196 and the organizations I have mentioned all have T.R.A. reform and funding as one of their legislative priorities for the 2018 legislative session, and we support this bill as drafted. The most significant provision of this bill for District 196 and the other school districts that these organizations represent is the state aid component. The state aid that is included in the bill will allow T.R.A. to be on track toward full funding without negatively impacting our students. Without the state aid, school districts across the state will have to make budget adjustments that will most likely result in fewer teachers and larger class sizes. For example, without the state aid, the annual impact on District 196 budget will be $2.1 million once the contribution increases are fully implemented. This is a cost that would directly affect classrooms in our district. So recognizing the value of the Commission's time, I'll end my comments here, but I will be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and appreciate you being here this evening. As I said, I got choked up about this topic, so. Our final provision in the bill this evening is the St. Paul Teachers' Provision. I have two testifiers this evening that have signed up, Dr. Michael McColler and Mary Gilbert, if they would make their way to the testifying table. Then after that, I have only one other individual who was asked to sign up tonight to testify, and that's Mark Haveman. If there's anyone else who would like to testify who is not on the list, we'll certainly give you a few moments as well to address the Commission this evening. But right now, we'll go to Dr. McColler. Welcome, and state your name for the record, proceed with your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Mike McColler. I'm the principal at Washington Technology Magnet School. We're just about two miles right up Rice Street here in the St. Paul Public Schools. I've been a teacher and principal in the St. Paul Public Schools for over 30 years now, and want to thank you, all the members of the Commission, for all of the work that you've done on behalf of the teachers of St. Paul. I'm also serving as the Vice President of the St. Paul Teachers' Retirement Fund Board of Trustees, and the full Board of Trustees, as well as the members of the St. Paul Teachers' Retirement Fund, fully support the provision of both of these pension bills. The combination of state funding, the additional contributions, as well as the meaningful reforms in these bills, I think, set up not only the St. Paul Teachers' Retirement Fund, but pension bills from throughout Minnesota for public employees for success and stabilization in the future. I'm not going to lie to you, on Sunday night, I was there with all of my students who were watching the news, right? Is there going to be a snow day tomorrow, or is there not going to be a snow day? And there was in St. Paul, as there was in a number of districts in Minnesota. But come Monday, I talked to a lot of our teachers today, as well as students, and they were, with technology now, emailing back and forth, and texting back and forth, and communicating with their students. Why were they doing that? Because they love education. They think that education is important. They know that they are having an impact on the future. And when those kids came back to school this morning, the kids were excited to be back in school, and the teachers were excited to see them. We want to maintain that enthusiasm, that excitement that our teachers have in the classroom, and preserve this defined benefit plan for all of our teachers. Once again, behalf of the St. Paul Teachers' Retirement Fund Board of Trustees, as well as the teachers of St. Paul, thank you very much. We fully support this bill.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I'm Mary Gilbert. I'm the legislative liaison for the St. Paul Public Schools, and I don't think I could say it better than Dr. McColler here. This bill is an effort that you have been working on for three years. It's comprehensive. It's hopefully going to address-- I'm not going to have to be back at this table, because it's so comprehensive that I think it's going to address the long-term funding needs of the fund, and will ensure that we'll be able to recruit and retain the teachers and administrators that we have, like Dr. McColler. And if you haven't been to Washington Technology, I would urge all of you to come down and see the amazing work that he and his team are doing down there.
Phil Holtite, Representative Murphy. Oh, I'm sorry. I may have a follow-up there.
Not quite.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing other inquiries from members. And again, as I said, we have one last testifier who has signed up this evening, Mr. Mark Haveman. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll bring him up, and we'll go to your question, Representative Murphy. So, Mr. Haveman, if you'll get on deck here, and Representative Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question. I just have a disclaimer. I have not talked to Ms. Sundin for this whole session, or this whole session, and so I had no idea how she was going to respond to my question, but I was inspired by the testimony that was given by those four individuals. And I thought of my very good friend and Pod member, Sandy Peterson, and so I wanted to reflect on the years that we knew her. And I'm really curious about that email that Ms. Sundin received, and I will want to follow up on that.
Well, Representative Murphy, I don't know if this is the appropriate term, but I think it might have been fake news. Somehow, I thought that might have been funnier than it was on a late evening like tonight. Sorry. With that, Mr. Haveman, if you'll introduce yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Mark Haveman. I'm the Executive Director of the Minnesota Center for Fiscal Excellence. I fully recognize the only thing stopping between you and dinner is me, so I will promise to make this a sub-three-minute exercise. But I do want to take 10 seconds to speak from the heart, as you suggested, and thank and recognize Ms. Lucheski and Ms. Barth for the outstanding work that they do in putting together such high-quality and accessible handouts and information summaries, as well as the website improvements that have been done. They are really, really good, and the best that I've seen in following this issue for 10 years, so thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, despite the positive provisions of this bill, the big picture is not changing. The actions in this bill are necessary but insufficient to address the challenges that the pension plans are facing. There are many reasons for this, but let me highlight two. First of all, these are rapidly maturing plans. The cash flow net of investment returns, which is contributions coming in minus the money going out in form of benefits, administrative expenses and such, across all the plans is now a negative $2.3 billion per year, and growing at a 4.3% rate since 2010, or the last time we had a sustainability fix. That's the tide that these new contribution increases are facing, and the $35 million in new state aids that is swimming against in 2019. In Minnesota significantly underfunded plans, as capital drain means the assets that remain must work much harder to make progress on paying for existing obligations. And the current situation can deteriorate now much more quickly. For example, 25 years ago, T.R.A. had $1.17 of cash flow coming in for every dollar going out, and the third-year Treasury Bill was yielding 7% risk-free. So uncooperative markets and volatile equity markets wasn't something to be overly concerned with. That landscape has completely changed. Now only $0.43 is coming in for every dollar going out, and the 30-year is hovering around 3%. In short, the margin for having a market hiccup is largely gone. Having one bad year, very bad year, or even several positive years that don't meet expectations has huge negative implications for these plans. Secondly, protracted, gradual, phased-in contributions make a difficult decision as politically painless as possible. However, it also sets us up for continuation of our 14 consecutive years of collective failure in achieving our annual required contribution. The failure to meet our ARC just over the past seven years, which included contribution increases and sustainability fixes, added $3.5 billion in unfunded liabilities. Responsible pension funding conflicts with all sorts of desired government spending increases and tax relief interests. Governments obviously like to keep their contributions low as possible, so that tax dollars can fund services for its citizens. Employees would like to keep more of their take-home pay. Retirees want retirement income to keep up with inflation. In this bill, we are continuing to accommodate all of those interests, but doing so in a way that transfers a lot of cost and risk to future citizens and public employees in an unacceptable way, in my opinion. And finally, fairness and shared sacrifice are key themes of this bill, and for good reason, and that's a very appropriate perspective to take. The problem is, younger public employees, future retirees, and future taxpayers are making now much larger sacrifices than any of the current stakeholders are. They just aren't experiencing them yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Haveman. Representative Thiessen.
Thank you. So from your perspective, how much more money should the-- would the state have to put in to actually make this, to make up for the differences you're talking about?
Mr. Haveman.
Mr. Chairman, Representative Thiessen, a couple of things need to be done before putting that number together, in my opinion. First of all, we have long objected to the use of the expected rate of return as the appropriate discount rate for public pensions, and that would affect that. The second thing that we would argue is that to avoid the intergenerational transfer of current obligations onto future taxpayers, the amortization period should be set at equivalent to the remaining service life of the existing employee base, and that's not being done as well. Until you do those two things, I think that sets the landscape for having the discussions of how much more money needs to be put into these plans.
Representative Thiessen, follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that would actually drive the number up, at least the second one of those things, right? Probably both of those things.
Both of those things.
Would actually make the investment from the state even higher to make up the difference. Okay. All right. I guess you don't have a particular number based on current, this kind of current situation, though.
Mr. Haveman.
Mr. Chairman, no, I don't.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Haveman? Thank you, sir. And, oh, Representative Murphy.
Mr. Haveman, would-- if the state put in a substantial amount of money relating to the existing employee, as you suggested, in the future, every two years, every biennium, would that alleviate some of the problem that you mentioned?
Mr. Haveman.
Mr. Chairman, Representative Murphy, the scheduling of contribution increases matters as much as the amount. An easy way to think about this is that suppose that the Great Recession somehow managed to keep us harmless, and we were able to put in the full ARC in that year when the market was tanking, to take advantage of buying low, so to speak. The conversation we'd be having right now, I'm guessing, would be very different. So you get into these issues of the scheduling, as well as the amount, and yes, some states-- So you get into these issues of the scheduling, as well as the amount, and yes, some states require that the A R C is put in, in full, in any given year. And we have chosen not to do that.
Representative Murphy.
And Mr. Haveman, and going with the suggest that you made in the Great Recession, if we had capped the mid-1990s compounding, that would have helped us a lot, too.
Mr. Chairman, Representative Murphy, absolutely. As a matter of fact, if I just may point out, and especially in the issues of COLAs, I don't know if it's even legal to do this, but the differences in the purchasing power of pensions that exist among retiree cohorts in this state is nothing short of extraordinary. If you have retired for about 18 years, about the time the bubble popped, and the termination of the policies that you just described, anybody who has been retired for longer than 18 years has seen the purchasing power of their pensions increase by 30% to 70% as over inflation. And compare that to more recent retirees, which are break-even at best, or perhaps even losing a little ground. So, you know, surgically targeting maybe some cohorts that have said, "Look, you folks, you're more than fine," would be, in our recommendation, a way to start approaching this COLA issue, by looking at how the COLA change over the period of their retirement has changed relative to inflation. Like I said, the cohorts are dramatically different.
Representative Murphy, follow-up?
No, but I'm thinking about what you said. I'll continue to.
Any other questions this evening for the testifier?
Madam, pardon.
Senator Sinjam.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if the witness would be willing or able to share his testimony in written form with us or not, but I'd appreciate a copy. Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to.
Certainly, certainly. Any other questions for the current testifier? If not, thank you for your time. And as I said, if anybody did not get a chance to sign up this evening and has a few thoughts that they'd like to share that did not get a chance, we'll ask you to come forward. Ma'am, it looks like you are the only taker of that offer at this point, so we'll bring you forward and have you state your name and provide your testimony for us.
My name is Mary O'Connor.
We'll give you the same two to three minutes that we've given everyone else on it this evening. Welcome, state your name for the record, proceed, please.
My name is Mary O'Connor, and I'm from Brooklyn Center. I get an M S R S pension, and I got a 2% raise this year. Retirees should not get raises until our pension funds are fully funded. Current employees and taxpayers should not have to pay more so retirees can get a raise every year. Most retirees not only get a pension, we also get Social Security. Most people depend upon Social Security alone for their retirements, and Social Security will go bankrupt in the future. Let the taxpayers save their money to bail out Social Security, rather than give their money to give raises to state pensioners. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Sir, we'll give you the last word, it looks like. You'll state your name, and again, give us a couple of minutes of your thoughts, if you would like.
Sure. My name's David Geis, former University of Minnesota Hospital and Clinic employee affected by the pension, the provisions for M S R S for that augmentation reduction. I just had a question for the committee. Is there any chance that any of the provisions can be changed before the next vote? Any amendments could be made, or is this the final bill before the committee?
Sir, I'll answer that question for you. The plan that we had laid out, and I realize that this might be the only evening you've been with us, but as you know, working this through in the interim before session started, we put a schedule together for ourselves, bringing things forward. Tonight was going to be primarily hearing input, and then next week is when the Commission will decide what they're going to do ultimately with the bill. So the answer to your question would be, yes, there is. However, it's going to be the Commission's decision as to how they want to proceed, and that will occur next week. Whether the Commission is willing to make changes at this point, that's going to be discussed, and the Commission will make that decision next week.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And with that, no other business before the Commission this evening. We adjourn.